Good evening, I'm calling to order the Concord Township Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, March 5th, 2024. Heather, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Lindhelfter?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Chirriaco?
Here.
Mr. Sheddler?
Here.
Okay, thank you Heather. We're operating with four tonight because we have two folks that are out, so we're down one, but we have a quorum. First item on our agenda after the call to order is the approval of the minutes for the January 2nd, 2024 meeting, as we didn't have a meeting in February. So, any comments about the minutes? With Hiram not here, it'll probably be pretty quiet.
The scrutinizer-in-chief isn't here.
Yeah, I know. Any comments on that at all?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
None, Mr. Chairman.
Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Could I have a second, please?
A second.
All right, thank you Frank. I have a motion and a second. All in favor approving the January 2nd, 2024 minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Correspondence, third item on our agenda, and I'll start with my left. Frank, did you have any correspondence this morning?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Anything, Ron?
No, sir.
Okay, Andy, anything?
Yes, I did. I had some correspondence with a resident that had contacted me regarding the zoning resolution for fencing requirements on in-ground pools and swimming pools, I guess in general would be the issue. And he brought his, he had a hearing against, or not against, but a hearing with, the Board of Zoning Appeals. He found an alternative solution that is currently approved by the state of Ohio, and it's in the Ohio Revised Code. It's a cover that goes over the pool that is a suitable alternative to building a fence around the pool. And he came to the Board of Zoning Appeals and made a request to use the cover, and they denied it primarily because it's not in the zoning resolution as an option. So what I would like to do is I would like to, and I've got a couple of reasons behind this, but I would like to see the zoning commission take into consideration this fencing issue with regards to pools and reword our zoning resolution for, and allow for these covers in lieu of the fencing for a couple of different reasons. Number one, it's in the Ohio Revised Code, so it's something that's already been approved, and we use our, the Ohio Revised Code as a guideline in many cases for crafting and doing our various legislation with regards to our zoning resolution. And number two, I'm not a big fan of fences, I'm just not. I think they're aesthetically, they're not very pleasing. I know people sometimes put a lot of effort and a lot of money into putting up fences, but I think fences, I just don't like them. I'm not a big fan of fences, and when you require people to put in a fence, if they put a pool in, you know, you're forcing them into doing something that they may not want to do, but they have no alternative. Correct. And so what I'd like to do is I'd like to undertake the process. I'd like to ask Heather to do some research on this pool cover and do some looking into various communities around the area, like we do with, you know, with most issues that we take in front of the zoning commission, take a look at what other communities are doing throughout the area and throughout the state, and see if we can craft some verbiage or some wording into our zoning resolution that would allow for these covers instead of a fence. I think it would be a win-win. I think we would reduce the number of fences. I think, you know, I think it would be a good thing from an aesthetic standpoint. I think a safety issue, obviously, my first concern is safety, you know, and making sure that we've got a good safe environment for people, and we don't want to create any liability issues. But in the same token, if this is an opportunity or an alternative that we can do to, you know, to offset the fence requirement, or at least give people an option to be able to choose between putting up a fence and using this pool cover, I would like to be able to do that.
Sounds good. Out of curiosity, what does this person do when the cover's off? I mean, during the summer?
I don't know. And that, we would obviously, I would, you know, he's done an extensive amount of research. He's offered to come in when, if we are able to put this on the agenda and to consider this, crafting this legislation. He's offered to come in to give some testimony to the board and explain, because he's done quite a bit of research on this and has quite a bit of information. He also knows a couple other people that are quite knowledgeable in this area, and he's availed himself to the zoning commission to be able to come in and talk to us when we, if we put this on the agenda, and we take this under consideration, whether it would be in a work session, he could come in in a work session and address the board with any questions or whatever that we have. And obviously, he'll be here as a resident, I would think, if we have a public hearing to allow that. I'm sure he would be here as a person, as a public hearing. Counselor, you look like you were going to ask me a question.
Hey, um, yes. First of all, did he mention that he's, maybe possibly appealing the BZA decision? So, my concern is possibly doing this rezoning, if it's initiated, I'm not sure by the zoning commissioner, if it's going to be initiated by the property owner. My concern would be to wait, to make sure if we know if he is going to appeal the BZA decision, because that was for an area variance, and it was denied by the BZA. And I understand that he may have mentioned to you there was something in the Ohio Revised Code. I don't know anything in the Ohio Revised Code that allows pool covers or that requires pool covers in lieu of fences. So I think we just have to be careful as far as the timing is concerned, as to when this gets considered by the zoning commission. Okay, I just want to make sure we understand that.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, we talked about the appeal process. You know, he had approached me prior to the, his hearing with the BZA, was looking for some guidance, and I talked to him about it, and I didn't, I wasn't real confident that he was going to be successful, but I didn't say anything. I didn't want to, you know, I didn't want to temper his enthusiasm. He contacted me after the hearing and told me that his request was denied, and he was asking me what is, what the recourse was at that point, and I told him, you know, that the BZA is kind of the final arbiter on these kind of issues, and, you know, that he would either have to appeal, or, you know, the other alternative would be to sue, you know, to see if, you know, to could take it to court. And I told him, I said, before you engage lawyers, no, no, no intent, but to engage a law firm and start spending money like that, I thought it might be a good idea to let's look at some alternatives and maybe some other ways we can go about this.
Which is also something that's definitely an option for him. He could initiate the amendment.
Right.
Just keep that in mind. That is definitely an option.
Right.
He can do.
Right.
Okay.
Yep. So I'm just, so I think it's, I think it's a, I think it's a worthy issue. I think it's something that we should consider as a board, if it's, with legal counsel's guidance on this, obviously, and with Heather doing some research and making some recommendations, and maybe putting together, crafting some initial verbiage, I think it would be a great al, it's an alternative. I don't think, I don't think we want to lay it down to where we're going to eliminate fencing as an option, or, and just put it all in favor of the pool cover, if that's the case. Or I think it would just be nice to, anytime you can give somebody an option and say, you can do this or that, either or, I think is a good thing for the residents, and I think it's a good thing for the community, and I think that it's something that's worthwhile taking into consideration, so.
Okay. Any problem putting that on one of our potential look-sees at some of the zoning amendments in the future? That we could go back and revisit that, just, you know, with some new facts, see if there's anything we would want to change? Could that be a future agenda item, in other words?
If the board would want to take that up, that they'll be filed. What legal counsel has indicated, the timing of that, we may want to hold off on that a little bit.
I agree. I agree. In the meantime, maybe look around and see what other communities are doing, but, and see more about whatever this cover would be. I still don't imagine, I can't imagine a cover that you'd put on every night, you know, but maybe you can. I have a neighbor that pushes a button in a cover, so maybe it's something like that.
I don't really know too much about it. This is just, you know, strictly on a correspondence basis.
Okay.
You know, so I thought that, you know, the opportunity to discuss this during the correspondence part of the agenda would be a good time to introduce this information and decide, and as a board, I think we can decide what we want to do collectively and go from there.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Andy. I had no correspondence myself, so we'll conclude the correspondence section. Public participation, obviously, we have no public here tonight, so we'll move on to the next item, which is old business, and we have no old business on the agenda for tonight. So, we move on then to new business, and the one item we have on here for new business is discussion about potential work sessions for updates to zoning resolution text. And Heather gave us a handout to take a look at here, dated February 27th, 2024, and it's a memorandum to us, the zoning commission, to take, to consider taking a look at some of these. Did you want to go through this, Heather?
Sure, I'd be happy to go through it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, I know, not that long ago, we did kind of take a pretty decent look at our commercial and industrial district uses. However, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea, and I kind of, after recently attending the Ohio Township Association Winter Conference, I sat in on a session that talked about, like, looking at your zoning resolution and, you know, just really looking at, like, the uses that are in there and determining whether or not some of those uses are still current uses, or if there's new uses that are more prevalent in your areas that we need to potentially take into consideration. And I know we looked at commercial, but I don't think it would hurt again to maybe look at that comprehensively, and look, like, a hard look at some of our residential uses. So some of the things that first came to mind was some of the impacts that we're having with these residential care-type facilities and group homes, and the, and those kind of uses operating in some of our commercial districts, and some of the demands that that, the strains that puts on our EMS services in the township, and really kind of maybe taking a look at, you know, where those really could be, should we make some changes on allowing those in various areas, also like group, some of the group homes. The other thing that had come to mind really, too, is we have some broad categories, and broad's good, too, but sometimes you might want to regulate, this is under B here, number one, B, maybe defining some more specific uses that could potentially fall into more general terms, like personal services and retail. So some of these examples, like vape shops right now, would fall in our definition of a retail. So I know that, right, you know, in Concord, we don't have a prevalence of those type of facilities, but there are other areas in Lake County and Ohio where as soon as one pops up, you start to get a whole bunch of them. So would the township, the zoning commission, want to maybe further define some of those uses so we could maybe regulate them better throughout the community, internet, like, sweep states, cafes, things like that. The other...
Didn't we, I mean, excuse me, Heather?
Yes.
Didn't we have a conversation on the internet cafes before, the internet sweep state cafe? Didn't we have that?
I, not while I was here.
See, it goes back to Bruce. Yeah, I think we did. I think we did, Andy, but it's some time ago.
Because that would, because that became, there was a boom in that business.
And so, right, and I think that...
A few years ago, and they were popping up everywhere.
So we don't allow them, they're not, they're not explicitly permitted in our zoning resolution, therefore they potentially are prohibited.
Right.
But should we maybe define it? That way we can separate it from something else and thereby not, and this is something that we have to work with legal counsel on, too, and their thought process on some of these things as well. But that, that's a good point. Yeah, right. So I guess if someone were to come to me now and ask if we do that, I would probably look at the zoning resolution, and it's not specifically in there, but does that fall under some other category that it might, someone might try to argue that it fits under? That might not be a good example of one.
Well, I know now that they've legalized, now that there's legalized gambling, you know, you know, with, with a lot of these gambling, you know, facilities and sites, I know that, and I don't know, and I would probably lean on legal counsel to advise, but I, the, I don't know that the, the things that we did when we did them, when the internet cafe gambling facilities were popping up, if that would encompass, if that would be good enough to cover us with where we're at today versus where we were several years ago. Technology changes, methods and means of doing these things change. Would it make sense to maybe, you know, revise that or revisit that and kind of see where that's at, and then if we need to tweak it, might be a good idea? So.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, Heather, go ahead.
No, that, that's fine. Yeah, that's good information, because I didn't even know that you guys had even took that up.
That was pre-you?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't, I, boy, that surprises me. Okay. Yeah, because I, yeah, because it was, it was a big issue, and I think the trustees actually had asked us to take, you know, take that under consideration at the time, because it was, they were, they were, I mean, any open spaces in retail, you know, plazas and strip, you know, strip plazas and whatnot, were just, these internet cafe things were popping up everywhere.
And I'm guessing that the intent was to not allow them, because we don't...
Right. Yeah, we wanted to restrict where they could be, and we all, I think it was all, it was very similar in scope with some of the other undesirable businesses that we wanted to try to head off at the pass, and we, we made some changes to the zoning resolution to keep, if we were going to allow them, it was in a very restricted space. I mean, we really narrowed it down to where, but they didn't have a whole lot of options where they could go or what they could do, and, you know, we might want to just revisit that and see if this, if it covers us from a technology standpoint today, because the landscape has changed.
Right, yeah. And those are good reasons to go back and kind of reevaluate, you know, the uses that you do permit. So also looking, like, at some of our residential districts, which we really haven't looked at much at all as far as uses since I've been with the township, and we have our traditional, like, permitted uses, like, single-family and two-family dwellings, but we have a lot of other conditional-type uses that fall under more public and institutional uses, and I thought it might be a good opportunity to take a look at those and see if those are still desirable in some of those residential districts. Are they still uses that people would potentially do in this area? Are there other uses that we need to maybe add? You know, we've not really talked about accessory dwelling units or in-law suites. Our zoning resolution doesn't really address those. I know that with our aging community and a lot of questions that I get, just being in the zoning office, a lot of folks ask about accessory-type dwelling units. They ask about in-law suites, which, you know, it's kind of a gray area, like, when we get plans in for additions and we see that, you know, master bedroom, that the kind of little kitchenette thing, it's kind of treading on, is this a dwelling unit? Is this an in-law suite? It's kind of a gray area. So it might be an opportunity to, you know, if we really want to truly allow in-law suites, like, write it in the resolution in a way that we can regulate it, however the community feels good about it, you know? Or is it an accessory dwelling unit, you know? So like, looking at some of the different housing options that would fit in with the existing environment within our R1 and R4 districts, but we all know that we're aging, especially in Concord Township. People are looking for alternatives, they want to stay here. They've, I've had, you know, lots of people tell me stories that they're putting additions on so mom or dad can move in with them, those kind of things, and it's just maybe possibly looking at some of those options as well, while taking a look at some of the uses. I know, also, like, we have some outdated sections in our zoning resolution, some things in here that, for example, are Section 32, that has to do with the oil and gas well regulations. I don't think these are in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code. I haven't talked to Bridie about that, but I do know that townships do not have the authority to tell oil and gas well drillers where they can put the wells, and that's pretty much what our resolution is saying. So if that is obsolete and we can no longer enforce that, like, maybe we just take that out. Also, maybe taking a look again at Section 33, our satellite-receiving antenna dish type. I never really had to look at that until recently, when someone brought that up to me. So just maybe taking another look at that and seeing if that technology or what we have in there is still what's going on with satellite dishes and TV and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, there's a new one, Starlink, the network that Elon Musk put up of satellites for internet services. They're offering that. Now you can sign up for that, but you have to have an antenna on your house to be able to receive the high, it's super-high-speed internet based on his network of satellites, but it's an antenna that you have to put on the outside. Not sure how big it is or what it entails, but...
See, changes in technology, right?
Well, I mean, you look at that, I mean, I think what, what we were dealing with when these things were first initiated into the zoning resolution was we were dealing with satellites that were 10 feet in diameter.
Yeah.
Okay. That took up a significant footprint on somebody's property. They were, you know, now we're dealing with a satellite dish that's this big, that sits under the eve of somebody's house. You don't even see it if you don't look for it.
Right.
And we're dealing with a much different environment than what we were dealing, again, technology changes, the landscape has changed, you know?
Yes.
I mean, that, that thing with Starlink could be a little tiny antenna that's big.
It could be.
Or it could be, could be some other type.
A microwave antenna.
Yeah.
Right, exactly. So, that's a good point, though. Rich, good point.
Another thought was to maybe take a look at some of our, we don't have a lot in our zoning resolution regarding temporary uses, but we do know that people do put up, like, temporary snow fencing in the winter, or construction fencing while they're doing projects. But I've had issues where people put up that snow fencing or that construction fencing, and they leave it up. They just leave it up, like, and it's like, okay, they didn't have, you know, they, it goes up and then usually it goes away, but then when it stays up, it's like, okay, it doesn't really meet, you know, our fencing standards or styles of fencing that you're allowed to have up. So it would be nice to maybe add something in there that acknowledges that people put up this type of fencing seasonally or during construction, and then that after a certain time, like, it can't be there forever, you know, basically without a permit.
That becomes an enforcement issue, right?
It might be, yeah. Like, there's a house, there's a house right now over on, on Proudy Road by Bridge Creek, and they have these really big evergreen trees, and this winter they put up this super-tall, like, screening kind of fencing, and I think it's for the winter to try to keep the stuff, you know what I mean? I haven't gone to talk to them to see what it is, and, you know, it's kind of like, well, it's kind of like they're keeping the landscaping, you know, safe during the winter, because it's like the first year it ever popped up. So, I don't know, like, is that, you know, is that a zoning violation right now? Should I be going to deal with that, or should I wait till winter's over and then if it's still up, then go approach them, like?
You're doing like the screen, like the screening material, like it looks like burlap?
Yes.
Yeah.
Keep the salt off, possibly.
But it's super tall. It's like 10 feet tall, probably.
Right.
Yeah, you know.
I think I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, and so it was odd, like, to see, but you kind of, I mean, I don't want to go, I mean, it would be okay, I think, on a temporary basis, if that is the purpose and intent to, like, during the winter, protect the landscaping or something like that. But if they were to keep it up year-round, you know, that could be a fence technically, the way they constructed it, a barrier, I mean, our definition, and, you know, I guess I could enforce that way. But it was just a thought to maybe acknowledge those kind of uses in our fencing.
It is, it is a material, and it is to keep the salt off in the wear-time from the salt spray to go up, but you should, if they put that up, they would probably take it down on their own, because if you leave it up in the summer, now it burns the shrubs.
Oh, okay.
So I, that is something I don't think that they would keep up all year-round.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I think a lot of times it's a multiple-use thing. You know, there's, I think it's salt, you know, slush and snow coming from the plows. I think it's also wind, and cold, extreme cold. I know there are certain, you know, certain shrubs and trees and things that are very, very sensitive to the winters here, and so they got to try to protect them to keep the, you know, to try to save them from getting damaged.
Damage.
So, but I would, I would be shocked if somebody was going to leave that up year-round, but it wouldn't be a bad idea to drop a note in their box to say, hey, just so you know, yeah, there's a time to live on that.
Yeah. And that's okay. I, if you guys don't want to look at that kind of stuff, too, I'm, that, you know, it's not that big of a deal, you know?
Mm-hmm. It doesn't hurt to take a look at it, though, because...
I'd be interested to see if other communities, like, even address that, you know, or maybe they just kind of let it go kind of thing, and if it's a problem, then go and approach the homeowners at that point, you know?
Okay.
Yeah. But looking at uses, again, we have this other, moving on number two on my memo, under Section 602, we have this section, prohibited uses, and some of this was written, like, from the very beginning of the time when we adopted our first zoning resolution in 1955. So, again, there's things in there that we're prohibiting. Should we take a look at that to see if those are things that we still need in there, are there other things that we need to add, and just kind of take in a look at that in conjunction with looking at all the other uses in the community? There, and I was going to put this under the zoning inspector report, but as you know, like, in the state of Ohio, the medicinal marijuana, or the recreational marijuana is legal now, and the trustees in the townships are able to regulate whether or not we want to have the retail or the processing and cultivation facilities within the community. The trustees actually passed a resolution in February of this year prohibiting those type of uses in Concord. They decided that would not, those are not uses that they would want to have here. So, I wanted to bring that first to your attention, so you know, and I had thought, too, I don't know if we need to maybe potentially cross-reference some of these other resolutions that if someone might not be aware of, but if we put it in the zoning resolution, we could add that list per the trustee resolution that was passed. We should probably add that in there as a cross-reference. I, some communities, too, are looking at those, like, Connex containers, the shipping containers, and deciding whether or not those are appropriate in those in their communities, and I didn't know if that was a topic that this board wanted to bring up, as far as allowing folks to use those, those shipping containers as accessory buildings, because they would technically meet our definition of a building, having at least, you know, so, and if you're not in a community with, like, an HOA with D restrictions, and your neighbor wanted, and somebody wanted to use one of those as an accessory building, as long as it met all the setback requirements, height, location, and everything like that, you know, we would have to approve it. So, that is kind of a new kind of use that people are using for, like, storage, or, yeah, and they're also using them to build homes and things of that nature as well, but, you know, is that something that we want to address in our zoning? I haven't even talked about this with Bridie yet, either, so I don't know if we can potentially even, you know, I don't know if, is that a building material or not, or could we regulate that? Is that something the board would not want to see in Concord, or would you be okay with those kind of things being used as buildings? And along those lines, too, tents or, like, softer, like, kind of like fabric, like, structures, more of like a temporary nature, like, a lot of people use them, like, as carports. But I recently had some property owner that erected a tent, a rather large tent, and this was a complaint that I had received from someone, and upon my inspection, they were using it as a building and someone was actually living in it. So, and I sent him a, I sent him a letter, and, you know, I just kind of said, and what I cited him on was that this was a building, you didn't have a permit, and by the way, you have too many buildings anyway, so I wouldn't be able to issue you an approval. So they took it down, and it hasn't been an issue, but that's just another, you know, another weird thing that I had to deal with this year that, you know, do, and, and that was okay, it all worked out, but it just brought to my attention that, you know, do we want to allow people to have those more temporary-type structures, you know, as buildings, tent-like materials? We could define it, we could, you know, prohibit it if you didn't think it was appropriate, or we could just leave it as it is. I do know, like, I had reached out to Painesville Township on that one to see if they had ever come up with any, had any other kind of situation such as that in their community, but they did have some regulations in their zoning regarding the shipping containers, and not, their trustees did not want folks to use tent-like materials for buildings.
Well, I know that the impetus, when I, when I've been on the zoning commission for a long time now, and I know that we had some discussions many, many, many years ago with regards to temporary structures, and one of the reasons that they had taken, undertaken that for the zoning resolution in Concord was because when people were, they were leveraging themselves to the point where they didn't have the money and, and alternate residents, so they were basically living in the basement of the, of the home that they were building, and they were, or they were putting up tents to live in the tent on the property while they were building their own home. to live in the tent on the property while they were building their own home, physically building their house. So that was an issue, because then people, because, you know, they, the people, I don't have to, there's no hurry for me to get my house done, because I got, I got quarters, I can, I got a place I can stay, you know, and live, and so consequently, you know, you get these tents and then temporary structures that people were using to live in, and it was being an extended period of time while they were building their home. So that was one of the impetus behind starting to limit that as an option, because, you know, people are creative, they'll come up with ideas if you have to, you know, with, with things like that, so I, yeah, the, now with the shipping containers, I agree, that's, you know, that's something that needs to be, you know, considered, because they, people are using them more and more, you know, for, for, aside just from storage. So, I think it'd be a good idea to look at that.
Well, and the next thing, number three in the memo, um, so the Ohio Revised Code, um, back in April of twenty twenty-three, it gave townships the authority to regulate small solar facilities. And those are, could be either like solar panels, um, that people like put on their homes, or they might have them freestanding in their yard, but basically it's a single connection to the grid. It's not like the solar farms, quote, um, like the ones that create more than fifty megawatts, those we don't have any authority to regulate, the counties do. But through zoning, we could um, regulate like the location, how they're constructed, maintenance removal, enlargement of those kind of like as an accessory structure, such as like a satellite dish that we have, you know, already. I do have some like, a sample resolution that they'll have a township association put out, be happy to give it to you guys if this is something that you guys want to look at on a future work session. We could easily integrate it into, you know, residential districts or commercial districts, like in our table of uses as one more, like, kind of accessory use. Some communities write a whole nother section on it, I don't know that we would need to do that. Um, right now, like the calls that I usually get from folks is they're doing like the rooftop solar panels, and so the installation companies are calling me saying, hey, do we need, you know, approvals on rooftop solar panels, and um, the way I've kind of been treating it is that as long as they're going to the building department and getting approval, then I'm not requiring a zoning permit, because we don't specifically address it in the, in the zoning resolution. But I know some communities um, have written it where they allow the rooftop, but they put restrictions in, like maybe it has to be on the back side of the roof, not facing the street. And then maybe they don't allow like the ground-based accessories, type ones, or if they do, they have setbacks for them and possibly screaming, depending on what's on the other side. So there, that's just new, again, new technology, um, new authority from the Ohio Revised Code, if that's something that we would like to address in our zoning.
What about windmills?
We could do that too.
Good point, though.
There's enough, yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah, that's, we've had that authority too for a while, which we've never taken that topic up either. Yeah. So, just, and then lastly, um, set, number four, really has to do with section twenty-nine-ten, and this, these are the existing parking requirements that we have for residential districts. So right now, the way it's written in twenty-nine-ten, this is for, these are parking requirements that are only applicable to residential districts. And I, I'm wondering if it would be um, a good idea to maybe open this up to not only properties that are zoned for residential, but also properties that are being used for residential, because this would capture some of those like houses that are actually on commercial property, like the so, uh, over here on Ravenna Road, we have several non-conforming homes that are on commercially zoned land, that potentially have campers, trailers being parked on them, boats, and things of that nature, but the way this section is written, it doesn't necessarily um, apply to them, because they're not zoned residential. For example, so like under the commercial vehicles, under twenty-nine-ten D, we allow, if, if the property is zoned residential, and you have a home there, and you have a work vehicle, a commercial motor vehicle that you drive to and from work every day, you're allowed to bring it home, you know, with these restrictions in there. But also, but if the, but if the lot is not zoned residential, then it technically wouldn't allow you to do that. But if it's being used for residential, you would want to still give that same property owner the ability to bring home that work vehicle if it still met all the, all the criteria. So that's one of the examples.
Do we have anything, Heather, that would, that would, let's say, for instance, you've got a home, a residential home that's in a commercial district?
Okay.
Okay, and that's, so that's a non-conforming issue. Is there, when that property changes hands, does it change have to be, does it have to come into compliance at that point? So that, is the, is the original owner grandfathered in, so they don't have to make any changes, but if they go to sell that house, then it can't be used as a home anymore?
No, they could still use it as a home, yeah. So the, the non-conforming section of our zoning resolution, section seven, and as long as that non-conforming use has been continued and not discontinued for a certain amount of time, they have that right to continue to use, use that. So you can't make them get rid of it, so.
No, but I'm saying if, 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 you know, if it's grandfathered in, and you're, you've got a home that's in a, in a commercial district, and it's a resident, residential home, and you're, you're, you're the original owner, and, and let's say, for instance, that it was, does a zoning, a rezone took place, and now you're in a commercial district when you weren't, when you built the house, okay, but now you're a non-conforming. We had some other issues like that, I think, in manufacturing, if I recall. So, would you, when, if the person sells the home, why wouldn't they have to then become under compliance with the new, because their, their grandfathering would no longer be in effect, I would think, yes, no?
Maybe Bridie can chime in.
I'm sorry?
Can you ask that question again? I'm sorry, I missed the last question.
No, I'm, I'm saying if, if a person, you, 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 you build a home, you have a residential home, and it's in a residential district, and it gets rezoned into commercial, to commercial. Okay, now you've got a non-conforming use for your property, you've got a residential home in a commercial district. Okay, but you were there already
Sure.
when that change took place, so you're, you're grandfathered in, and I'm okay with that, I understand those things happen, you know. However, now you sell your, now you sell that property, okay, to a new, to a new person. Could you stop them from using that as a residential?
Property? No, it's still a non-conforming parcel.
Right, so we couldn't, we couldn't enact anything that would force them to then come into compliance with the, the commercial district that it's in, and say, okay, you can sell this property, you're certainly welcome to do that, however, you can't, somebody just can't move in and take up residence and just use this as a residential property, because you're in a commercial district.
Right, I don't think so, because it was a legal non-conforming use before the rezoning, and if it's the same legal non-conforming use when you sell it, yeah, they can't, they don't have to comply with the commercial zoning districts. Now, if for some reason it sat vacant, or however many years it is, the non-conforming use could then be deemed discontinued, then if it gets then sold after that expiration of time, then yes, they have to comply with the commercial zoning district regulations.
Right, so it would have, it would have to basically become vacant, or not used for, for a, for a specified period of time.
Correct.
In order to be able to, to force that issue to, to, to come into compliance.
That's correct, or if they do something where they expand their non-conforming use, um, they would have to come in compliance, I believe, with the commercial district. So in other words, let's say they, I don't know, if they were to build an addition to their house, would they have to, um, because that's an expansion of a legal non-conforming use, I'm pretty sure they have to, the expansion would either have to get some sort of variance, or they'd have to comply with the commercial zoning districts. I don't think you can expand the footprint of your legal non-conforming use.
Is there anything we could do from a zoning resolution standpoint that would prevent that from continuing on, or no? You just, it's, if it's?
I mean, I think that's actually by Ohio Revised Code, as far as the non-conforming and the discontinuance and the period of time. Now, maybe the period of time can vary, but I think it's, I'll have to look at the Ohio Revised Code, it may, may read like at least six months of a discontinuance. I'm not sure what we have in our code, is it a year?
Right.
I don't know. Um, but maybe that's what can vary, is the timeframe.
But that seller would have an advantage, because they could sell it as residential, or if somebody commercial comes along,
Right.
and sell it to commercial.
Well, sure, right.
They sort of gain on that, a little bit.
I could also look and see if there's anything under the home rule provisions, that Concord is obviously a home rule township, and see if there's anything under that with respect to maybe you have more flexibility there, I'll have to look.
Dad'd be curious.
Yep. Maybe I should have passed, I do have kind of, sorry, for this section four on here, I did have, kind of have a part of this printed out for you guys. With some of the crack pages that I was thinking about in the office, I was getting a little ahead of myself, you guys, we, maybe wanted to work on this per se, but um, I read one from my side, sorry. But this was, this section twenty-nine-ten, this is kind of what I was summarizing in my memo to you. So, one of the things that, you know, having a new assistant zoning inspector really got us looking and diving into somebody's regulations, which is good, it kind of challenges the interpretation on some of this, and and brings up questions, so Mike and I were talking about these sections, and um, we've got this provision in here under um, section A, number five, that basically if you have, if your parcel land is two acres or greater, you're allowed to park or store your vehicles anywhere on the property. They don't have to be on a driveway or a parking area, and I wasn't sure what the thought process of that was, um, at the, you know, when the township originally adopted that, and if that was something that you know, would, would still, we would still want to do, or, you know, if you're, or if folks are going to park or store their cars outside, you know, is, should that be related to their lot size, you know, as to whether or not they're allowed to park on the grass, or they have to be on a driveway or an improved surface? Something to consider. And the other, this has to do with section D under the commercial vehicles as well. So some of the, the commercial motor vehicles that we allow residents to bring to and from their property if they drive them to work, we also have this provision that talks about in the trailer, so like, if, like, so say if you have a landscaper who brings his, his pickup truck and his large trailer home every night to and from work, this would allow them to bring the large landscape trailer, park it in their driveway, and not have to meet any of the utility trailer screening requirements, or setback requirements, or whatever we have for non-commercial type trailers. And just wanted to know whether or not that was a concern of, like, if we wanted to allow those kind of folks to bring home those large kind of, you know, trailers that are being used for commercial purposes, as long as it's attached to their work vehicle every day.
I had a situation like that, years ago, I lived on Coal Ridge Road up off of eighty-four in Concord. That was my first home in Concord, and I had a neighbor who retired as a fireman, and as his second career bought a Snap-on truck, where they sell Snap-on tools, and a big socket wrench on the side, side of the truck fifteen feet long.
Yeah.
And he backed into the driveway, and it kind of blocked everybody's view down the street, because that truck was so huge, but that was his income, you know, and everybody liked the guy, so nobody formally complained, but it was kind of a, a, kind of an obstacle in the neighborhood to have this big white Snap-on truck sitting there. So, that, that would fall into this category here somewhere.
So we, because we've had some instances where we've tried to enforce our um, utility type trailer parking requirements, and I don't know if it's a definition thing or what it is, but like a utility trailer definition, like if you, if you own a trailer and you're using it for your own personal, you know, things, not business-related, then you're allowed to have that on your property, as long as it's parked at the minimum building setback line on an improved surface and screened from your neighbor. However, if the trailer is your commercial motor vehicle trailer, you don't have to follow the same setback screening surface area requirements. It's kind of, it, they don't, maybe we need to look at them and make them the same requirements, or maybe we need to not allow the more commercial type trailers to be coming to and from the residential properties. There's kind of a mismatch there, it's, because then you get into this, is it commercial or is it not? And I've had that debate with property owners before, who have said, well, this is in my utility trailer, I use it for business, it's commercial, and it says right here I'm allowed to have it. I'm sure you know what I'm talking about, Frank.
If you're a ten acre lot, it's a lot different, ten acres is a lot different than a half acre lot, you know.
Yeah, yeah, and you have to think about that now, our community, we have, we have quarter acre lot developments, you know. So, and a half acre, and even a half acre is not that big.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, these homes are well, like, if you're in the RCD district, you, your house could be thirty feet back from the right of way. So thirty feet plus another maybe fifteen feet of, you know, your apron to the street, forty-five feet back from the road, you back in your pickup truck and your commercial utility trailer, it takes up your whole driveway, you know, I don't know. Just something that maybe we should look at, make sure they either they're treated the same, or maybe we don't allow the commercial utility trailers to come home, I don't really know, so, just wanted to point that out. And then two other really quick things, under section E, we have this display of vehicles or recreational vehicles, and we allow, you know, people that live in residential districts, if they have a car that they want to offer for sale, there are, we, we do allow for them to, to have no more than two sales per year, right, and we have some parking setback requirements where they're allowed to park it. It was brought to my attention, there could be a loophole here, right? So say somebody has a large RV, and they want to put it on their driveway and slap a sign on it and say for sale. They only have to comply with this section, however, we have another section that talks about parking and storing RVs, and you have to be setback from the road on an improved surface and screened from a neighbor. So, the thought was maybe to add some time limits, like if someone were to offer a vehicle or a recreational vehicle for sale, for each sale no longer than, I don't know, thirty days maybe, that was what I thrown in here, but then at least, you know, if there's an issue, and this obviously I think would be more complaint driven, we're not going to go around looking for these kind of things, but like, I had had an instance, there was, there's been a home or two where there were constant sales of vehicles, right? And that's easy to track the number, right, but if someone were to think, okay, and we had an instance where somebody had an issue with an RV, and it wasn't in the right requirement, all she had to do was slap that for sale sign on there, and she's compliant. So, the thought was maybe to add some time limits on if we were going to still, you know, if we want to allow, allow them to, to offer those items for sale. I don't have any problem with people selling things, you know, if we want to give them that opportunity, you know, you have a little car, you want to sell it, whatever. But it also allows for the recreational vehicles, which I think could be a loophole. And then moving on, just right after that, um, section F, the construction equipment vehicles, um, and this is kind of going in the opposite direction of that, here we allow them, but for no more than thirty days, and actually upon reviewing another section, it kind of conflicts with that. Um, so I think we need to eliminate the, the thirty day require, allowance for the construction equipment, and basically just not allow it there at all unless there's construction happening at that time. I know that was a lot, there was a lot of different things, so I'm happy to chat with you.
This is good, I mean, we live in an ever-changing world, and we have to keep our zoning regulations dynamic, of course, still looking at the nineteen fifties or nineteen sixties, we're kind of behind the times, so, I think it's a good idea to do, what do you guys?
Just a few years.
Yeah, I know, guys, in agreement that this is something worth? Yeah, I know. You guys in agreement that this is something worth putting on future agendas?
Totally agree.
Most definitely. I've had experience, so.
And then, and then if the board still wants to look at the whole fencing swimming pool, we could add it on our list. But maybe we work on some of these other things first and then as time goes on, we can look at that as well.
Okay.
Once we've gotten through the whole, you know, maybe the next couple meetings.
Good topics, Heather. Thank you. The next item on tonight's agenda is something new that Heather and I talked briefly last week. We're adding a new section on the agenda every month. It'll be a zoning inspector report with the idea that Heather kind of gives us an update on what's going on in the township that we need to be aware of or we should be aware of, uh, so that we're kind of current with whatever is happening. So you can do the, uh, the premiere first edition of the inspector report.
Okay, well, thank you. So I just wanted to, um, mention a few things that you might not be aware of. Everyone, the Concord-Painesville Joint Economic Development District, they recently hired a consulting firm, um, to do a study on the Quail Hollow Hotel. So I think we all know that they've been closed, um, probably for at least three years now. And, um, the, the building's in really bad shape and the JED wants to help Concord Township kind of figure out what is the next highest and best use of that property, that building, you know? Could somebody potentially purchase it, renovate it? What are the economics behind that? Do the numbers work? You know, if it, if it couldn't be renovated, you know, if it was demolished, you know, what would be some other feasible uses of that property? So the, the JED is working with a consultant. We just had our first kickoff meeting. Um, we do have a little working committee that's helping the consultant and the JED firm. I'm part of that. Also, the administrator is, um, one of the JED board members, Morgan McIntosh, and then Rita McMahon, the administrator, and a couple individuals from Silverload. So we're hoping to have a report by sometime in May. And there will be some kind of public presentation of the, of those findings to the trustees and or the JED board. So I'm happy to loop you in on when that meeting's going to be if you guys want to come and attend. Because I think the next kind of steps after that would be for the township to start looking at the zoning. Okay, so now that we know, like, what are some of the, the uses that could be feasible at this location? What might we have to do to, you know, with our comprehensive plan or our zoning as far as changing like the the uses, the, the district standards, um, that, that property is owned special, special interchange? Which in itself is a special district because it was really formulated for the hotel. So there's, um, we added.
So is that considered a part of the, uh, is that considered a part of the, uh, the P U D or not?
It is not part of the P U D. There's a lot of, yeah, there's so many folks that because of the ties with the golf course it used to have in the past, a lot of people, our resident, current residents, um, old, old time residents, new residents, they still think it's part of Quail Hollow P U D and they, they left, um, the golf course left that building decades ago, from what I understand. I mean, they used to have a nice working relationship with the locker room and the club and everything over there. But those facilities haven't, you know, they, they've not worked together in years. There's actually two parcels that the hotel owns, the, the main one that the hotel sits on. And then across the street, the little gravel parking lot where the, that's also another separate parcel. In the past, it's just been used for, I think, the valet parking.
Yeah, overflow parking, right.
Yeah, so. So I just wanted you guys to know about.
Anything functioning in that building now at all?
Um, I mean.
Security.
They do, yeah. So it is, yeah, they do have twenty-four hour security there. Um, I know our fire inspectors are in there frequently, you know, checking on things. Um, I know you've seen, you know, all the caution tape in the parking lot. They've got challenges with sink holes and partial, part of the building has been condemned. There's mold and, and things in various sections and all kinds of things. And actually, the committee's going to do a walkthrough of the building on Thursday this week, so they, so the, um, the firm knows like what, they're going to bring their experts in. We're walking in with our deputy chief, Mike Bedell, and Doug Rodder, fire prevention, is going to take us through the building and, and show them. So they can see firsthand what's going on there. Um, but.
That was once a beautiful building inside. I mean, had indoor pool, a steakhouse, beautiful. I had a high school reunion there, probably in the eighties. It was beautiful, beautiful. In fact, I, I had a business meeting there once that I, I rented the place and, and had a meeting there. And it was, we had a phenomenal room, looked out on the golf course. It was really nice. And that, that was probably, uh, in the early two thousands.
My son's wedding, my son's wedding reception was held there.
And it was nice, wasn't it?
Oh, it was beautiful.
Yeah.
We stayed in, we had rooms at the facility and everything. It was really nice, but that was.
Yeah.
A while ago.
Yep.
So I just wanted to let you guys know about that because I, you know, I know there's a lot of chatter like online, social media about what's going on with the hotel. So hopefully we get some good direction. I know that they're also going to reach out, you know, to real estate agents and experts and other, you know, possibly the development community too, to see, you know, what kind of ideas that have been thought of potentially for that area. I know that the own, the ownership, the owner's representative is working, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned this too. The owner, the owner's representative is, is working with us as far as this process as well. So they're very open to the study. They're excited that we're even taking this on because I think their end goal too is to, to sell the property. Yeah.
He's in New Zealand, correct?
Yeah, the owners are in New Zealand. We're not dealing with them directly. They have someone in, in the States that's their representative. Yeah. Fingers crossed, yep, yeah.
That needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
It's an eyesore.
Yes. Um, I already did mention the trustee resolution that they, they passed, um, twenty-twenty-four dash zero-three that prohibits the cultivation, processing and retail sales of the adult-use cannabis. That is linked on our township website too, under.
It was in the grapevine, if I'm not mistaken, too.
You're right.
Did they put it in there? Okay.
I think so, because I might got the, the last grapevine. I thought that's where I read that, that they had passed that resolution, so.
Yeah, so speaking of the grapevine, um, the, the townships decided to go to just two mailed grapevines. We used to do three, so now you're only get two. And if you haven't signed up for it already, we do an E grapevine that you get every month.
Right, like clockwork.
If you haven't signed up for that, there, I can send you a link where it's on our website. So each department tries to contribute to that and, you know, bring relevant information.
Yeah, I get both. I get the mail and the, the electronic.
Okay.
Maybe it was, I might, I might, actually it might have been the electronic version where I saw the resolution on the cannabis facilities.
It might have been, yeah.
But I know I saw it somewhere, read it that they had done that.
Good. Another quick thing, um, the Ohio, the Ohio Planning, the Northeast Ohio Planning and Zoning Workshop. I know some of you have possibly attended that in the past. We, this is the, um, Planning and Zoning Workshop that Dave Redachi with Lake County Planning helps organize in conjunction with Ohio Planning. And this year it's going to be held on Friday, Friday, June twenty-eighth in Willoughby Hills at the Recreation Center. I don't have the full agenda yet. They're still formulating speakers and whatnot. But once I get some, um, information on that, um, I know we've offered, um, that to pay for attendance for, um, B Z A and zoning commission members in the past, so if that's some, some interest of you guys, I'll get that information to you. But it's Friday, June twenty-eighth. Usually it's from like eight-thirty to three-ish. And they try to tailor those sessions to like townships and, um, and really relevant topics as well, so. And then, um, also one thing I was thinking about, if you guys, it is part of this zoning, you know, report, like, do you want to hear like updates about like B Z A cases, like just what went in front of them? What kind of things they, you know, heard or approved or denied? I mean, is that of any interest to you guys or?
That'd be interesting. I, I like to watch their videos on YouTube.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it would be important because of, if we're, if we're dealing, if, if somebody's in front of the B Z A, it's usually regarding a zoning issue.
Yeah, and if we're seeing a trend or a pattern about something.
Something happening, I think that would be a good, uh, vehicle for us to make, maybe be a little more proactive with some of the things we're doing as, with the, the zoning resolution.
Yeah.
You know, I think, yes, it would be a good idea to have a rundown or a recap of.
I mean, I'm talking a very brief. I would probably just say there was a case regarding this, this and this, and the board either approved it.
Yeah, yeah, you don't have to get into the minutia. I think a good overview of the activity for the B Z A would be good to have in our, to be aware of.
Okay.
Helps us out. I think it helps us.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Okay. And then just, you know, kind of tacking on to maybe looking at uses in the commercial district too. I, I was recently, um, contacted by, um, Joe Avani. And Joe Avani is, owns, um, the Avani Group, which is a real estate investment development firm. They purchased the lot at the corner of Ravenna and Girdle, the one across from Pinky's. The vacant lot there. A few years ago, they bought that. Um, I think Osborne finally lost it in one of those share sales, right? And, um.
Which one? On which corner?
The southeast corner.
So. So, okay, so directly across from Pink's.
Directly across from Pinky's.
Or not the other one that's got the sign on it.
Right.
Correct, not Kitty Corner, not across from Bremer, yeah.
Directly across the street. The one there was a house there that they raised.
Yeah, years ago, there was a house there, yeah. Yes. They, they've been kind of actively trying to pursue some development options for that site. Um, they've been having some challenges due to, um, they, they did, they got some survey work done. They started looking at the plat, they looked at, you know, what the setbacks are. And the buildable area is rather small once you apply all the setbacks from both the rightaways and, you know, the buffer from the residential, those kind of things. And so they know in order to probably develop anything there, they're probably going to have to get a variance, um, from some kind of setback. But they're, they were trying to get some guidance from the township as far as what do we want there? What is the vision, um, for that lot? Um, because they're trying to gain our support. There are challenges with that intersection. There's no sanitary sewer available there. So that also puts a little bit of a limit on there. They really haven't pursued, you know, what, they haven't really looked much into the septic yet because they don't know, you know, what we would be open to from, from a community. I did talk to the trustees about this too at our staff meeting that we had last Monday, just to plant the seed with them for some future conversations. But maybe, maybe as we look at some of the, the uses in those commercial districts, we can kind of keep that intersection in mind. And actually, in our comprehensive plan update in two thousand and fifteen, there were some recommendations in there to, hopefully that would have engaged the, the township to look at that entire intersection as far as how would we envision that to be built out. And that, and I think this was updated before Bremer came in, if I recall. I don't remember the time. I think Bremer came in after we had originally written this. So we didn't know what was happening with that former landscaper that was there that was, right? Um, we don't know what's happening with the other lot that they've been trying to sell forever. So I don't know. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. They, they want to develop something there. They don't know what we envision there. And maybe we can kind of talk about that or bake that into.
What's the resident to the south, direct south of that facility? What's, what's the, is the resident giving any input?
No, I mean, no, they have, um, as far as I know, those property owners haven't talked to the resident to the south. I know that Avani talked to the neighbor to the east. And the neighbor to the east has commercial property as well, but he's, he's got a residential on there. So it's a non-conforming use, right? And I think they were trying to engage, talking to him about, maybe, maybe buying the land.
On Girdle?
Yes.
To the east on Girdle?
Yeah, directly to the east of him.
That's a, there's a residence there? Used to be the old cable TV place was there. I thought it was, I thought that was the, the, oh, the Vet is.
The Vet is the next one, yes. You have the vacant lot, the residence, and then the Vet building that's on the market currently.
Right.
So all those.
That's on the market still.
Yes, yeah. And that's a whole nother.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've gotten a lot of calls about the former Vet building. And again, it seems like, and we know this because we knew this back in fifteen, no sanitary sewer is really, is why nothing has happened over there for quite some time.
And there's nothing for them to tie into?
And I, you know what? I have to probably reach out to Randy Roethlisberger to figure out, you know, how far down that would have to come. Because now with Joanne and Stone Ridge Station.
I was just going to say.
The developer brought it to there at least. So I don't know what the probability of is, could they extend that line, bring it to the intersection? Do they need another pump station somewhere? I don't know any of that, but.
Yeah, I'd like to know that too because that would be, because when you start deducting from the buildable area for a septic, it's really going to cut down on what you can do.
Yeah.
If they have sewer capability, that would certainly expand. I think it would be to the township's advantage, number one, and number two, to the, to the potential builder or, you know, whatever they would, that would make.
And that would help Pinky's too, because I know he really wanted to tie into the sewer a couple of years ago when he did the renovations on the, on the fuel pumps and all of that. And, um, I, I know he reached out to Randy and whatever they talked about was just way out of what he was, price point could do, you know.
So that southwest lot doesn't have sewer either?
Correct, that entire intersection does not. Yeah, so Bremer's on a septic. I think it, on that side, it ends at, well, they brought it to, I don't know where it stops on, on that side of, of Girdle. I don't even know. But as we know, usually it's the developers that, that bring that down as they, they build the developments. We're not in the, the county's not extending sewers proactively. It's usually development-driven, so.
Yeah, because I know Summerwood, they come in from the right, the, uh, the, the, the easement for the sewers come in from Girdle Road parallel to Summerwood. So I know that, you know, that's, that's, that's quite a ways down Girdle Road, the entrance, you know, Summerwood to.
And down a big hill.
Yeah, that's, that would be, that would pose a hell of a challenge from an engineering standpoint. To get sewer up the hill and over that, that would be probably pretty much impossible. And I mean, where else? You got Butterfly, right? You got, you know, with, uh, Noble Ridge. I mean, there's nothing really close as far as, you know, sewers are concerned. Any, I think any direction coming in from either.
I'm, I'm not sure where it would come from, which, which line it would have to be or anything, you know? Yeah. So I just wanted to let you know about that and I don't know if you guys have ideas or can talk about what would be appropriate there at that corner. I mean, it's.
Good news, good, good information for us to have. Anything else on there?
That's all I really had.
Okay, great. Well, that's a, I think it's a nice addition to our agenda going forward. Uh, anything else tonight on the commission up here to talk about? If not, uh, our next meeting then is April second, two thousand and twenty-four, and, uh, we'll adjourn for tonight. Thank you, guys.